Are you ready?
Yes.
I just take your, I just totally take your agenda.
Yeah.
We'll call the Capitol City Council meeting for April 14th to order. Sue, can I start with the roll call?
Councilmember Norton.
Here.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Botorff.
Here. Can we all rise and sue to do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the United Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with our presentations and for that we have our police chief.
Good evening, Mayor Botorff and city council members. As the request come from the council was to periodically we'd like to bring staff in to reintroduce them. Obviously, we at the police department work various shifts, various hours, and so sometimes we don't get around and get to see each other, so it's our opportunity to get acquainted again and we appreciate this opportunity. So Sergeant Mark Gonzalez, he was hired in May of 2000 and he has been a patrol supervisor for the last, going on eight years. He's also worked in the investigations unit. He was promoted to sergeant in 2008. He just recently completed the post-supervisor leadership institute. It's SLI and that was in 2014 and that is a nine-month process and you have to apply for that. And so all of our supervisors have been applying for the post-supervisor leadership institute and that's been great. He recently received his bachelor's degree and currently oversees the range and firearms and all of our vehicles for the department. And Senior Officer Sarah Ryan, she has been with us since 2005. She actually started out as a community service officer. And in 2006, we hired her as a full-time patrol officer. She's been lead detective and she oversaw numerous investigations while she was in our detective bureau for two years. Both she and Sergeant Gonzalez worked extensively on the Gordon Smith homicide. That was the homicide that we had two years ago and the son and mom were convicted of that and on April 20th, he will be, or they will be sentenced for that crime. Sarah has a bachelor's degree in social work and she's a lifelong resident of the city of Santa Cruz County area. Right now, she also oversees the training for all of our responsible beverage providers down in the village, all the alcohol licenses. She oversees that program to help them understand what it means to identify minors or people who are intoxicated to the point where they shouldn't be served anymore. And that's, as we know, a very important program, especially for the neighborhoods down in the village. And so she's an intricate part to that. So anyway, I wanted to make sure I introduced you to them and give you an idea what roles they play, which are extremely critical to the department.
Great, thank you, Chief. And thank you for coming, both of you, Mark and Sarah, for letting everybody get reacquainted with you. It's always good to see you. Okay, with that, Sue, do we have any additional materials?
Yes, we received two additional materials regarding the appeal of a planning commission approval of a design permit in variance for a garage addition to a single-family home located at 4980 Garnett Street. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff, no changes.
Okay, with that, we'll proceed to public comments. This is a period where we allow anyone from the public to come and talk to us for three minutes about any topic that is not on the agenda. All we ask is that you state your name and if you would sign in, that would be wonderful. And with that, Gail, why don't you come in and tell us what you're here for?
I'm ready. Good evening. I was happy to hear about the officers. I think that's a great thing that he's doing because oftentimes we don't know him and it's really nice to get to know them.
Our police chief is very cooperative.
He's more than that, right? I'm Gail Ortiz. I'm from the Riverview Terrace area and I'm here tonight to invite all of you to Vision Capitola. It's two workshops that are happening, starting this coming Wednesday night and the following Wednesday night at Jade Street Park. They are to get input from our citizens. Everybody's invited. I hope you will make it. I hope some of the staff will make it. Everyone's invited to give us the answer to two questions. The first one is, what do you value about living in Capitola? And the second one is, what would you like to see happen in the next five to 15 years? We have a website that people can go on, www.visioncapitola.com. If people cannot make one of this first meeting, the first meeting, people will be talking about what, the answer to those two questions. The second meeting will be going over everybody's answers to those. So this first meeting is really important. If people can't make it to this first meeting, you can go on the website, go on the participate page and fill out the comment form and your answers will be counted just as if you were at that meeting that night. So we really encourage a lot of people to show up. We want to have it be a positive, forward-thinking, forward-moving, instead of looking back at the past and whatever might have happened, to look at the future of Capitola. And it's a great opportunity for all of us to hear one another, talk about what we love about Capitola. And it's going to be a really fun night. Are there any questions about it?
No questions.
So I heard you have an organizing committee that you've been reaching out to many members of Capitola. Can you give me an idea how many people are involved at this point?
So we have about 25 people who are involved in, on the committee as neighborhood leaders and the core group that have helped me get this all together. We've passed out, with all the 25 people, we've passed out 5,000 flyers. These flyers, I'm going to leave some at the back of the room, too. And so we have canvassed pretty much every single neighborhood, every condominium unit, mobile home parks. We've hit the ground running over the last two weeks and pretty much everybody's been covered. If they haven't, they can go on the website, pick a flyer up at City Hall, either here or upstairs. So everybody should have gotten a flyer unless your house looked like it's just a weekend house. And in that case, we didn't leave it because we didn't want it to be sitting out too long to jeopardize people's security. But we do want weekend people here, there, too. They have a voice as well.
What do you want the role of the council to be at these two meetings?
You know, our core group especially are not going to be giving, we decided we are not going to be giving our two cents at those meetings. We want this to look like and feel like people can get up without feeling like they're being led or coerced or instructed in some way or other. So I would, I would hope that you guys would come and I would think that might be your same role and that is just to listen. We're going to be video, videoing this and we're also going to be writing down everybody's answers. And so we're going to have a double means of making sure that we get everybody's answer correct in the, in the report to you folks. It'll come to you, your first meeting in May.
It's not being advertised as a council meeting, though.
It is. It's being, it has been, I think it's supposed to have been noticed.
It's been noticed, not as a council meeting, though. It's been noticed.
But it's been noticed as a, as a public meeting, so you're all, you can all go. Hope you will. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Well, good. Gail, thank you for that information. Everybody watch that.
Hope you have an easy night.
See you there. Anyone else from the public like to go up and share any information? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. We'll move on to city council comments. Any comments from the city council? I have a few. Go ahead.
I'd like to ask the chief. We had some questions about, in general, from some of the citizens about skateboarders in the village and dogs on the beach. And I know we can't possibly patrol every minute of every day and we're certainly not looking to live in a community where there's a uniform on every corner. That would be a different kind of life. But is there, is there any effort with the CSOs and the parking patrol to report things like this?
Yes, and all of the above. They do as they are available. We have two CSOs that work seven days through the week. Wednesday is an overlap day. And so they do get down to the beaches. Usually those are response-driven by calls for service. And so we are available to handle those calls as, as a call or complaint does come in, but they are available for that.
Fantastic. And an old issue that, you know, from a couple of years gone by, we are, I know you started a really great program up in the avenues because we had some concerns about some criminal activity. And are we still supporting the neighbors up there and keeping an eye on their neighborhood?
Yes, we do have active projects that go on there. We call them community-oriented policing projects or POP projects, problem-oriented policing, where we engage the neighborhood, provide them with suggestions and resources, maybe on how to deal with landscape issues or tenant issues that are involving properties where somebody is a tenant and maybe the property owner lives out of the area.
Those are the issues, yeah.
Yeah, so we do engage them, yes.
Great, thank you very much, Chief.
Yeah, this is for the chief.
Go ahead, do you have any questions? Chief, I'd like to thank you for responding to an incident that was up at Capitola Road,
no, Capitol Avenue, up above Gail's, I think. So I had some neighbors come to me and complain about a drug situation, maybe some violence and stuff like that. And I went to the chief and found out that they've already covered the situation, that they're helping eviction of a tenant and helping that particular landowner, you know, take care of the particular problems at that property. So I thought that was very good that I heard about it, but you had already taken care of it.
Well, thank you. And we didn't do, work on that alone. Our building inspector was very helpful. We do work in partnerships with our other department heads and staff as well to solve those problems. So they were very helpful as well.
I do have one question. I heard about from neighbors. How did you get made aware of this particular situation?
We actually had heard it from the patrol officers. We also, you know, keep an eye on our Facebook page and our next-door neighbor conversations so we can hear and see what's going on. Not all the time do people want to report activities. Sometimes they, they're not sure whether to dial 911, but there are options that people can relay information to us, whether it's through our social media activities or even straight emails. But it also is nice to engage an officer and flag him down and let them know if they suspect that there's problems.
Okay, it's very critical that people in this, this, the city get to contact you at whatever means possible so that we're made aware of issues.
I will have to say that some of the success we had yesterday with capturing our bank robber came from alert citizens who were giving us information. So in order for us to be successful, we have to have that partnership.
Okay. One other thing, so I'm walking down Monterey Avenue and I see the police chief walking up. I said, why is it a little unusual? It's a hot day and he has his coat and jacket on. It's obviously absorbing all the heat because it was black. It was a really hot day. I said, well, what are you doing? I was going to talk to one of your neighbors. He had some concerns about the speeding on Monterey Avenue, which you know is very of concern to us because there's a school there. So I just want to thank you very much for taking the time to go and talk to the neighbor about an issue that's very, very important to us. You're welcome. Thanks.
Did you have any comments, Mike? Doc, do you have any council comments?
Yes, I do. About a year ago, Mike Termini, oh, this is just a side, thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, Mike Termini came and said that he had just spent about two days in one of the most remarkable places on earth. And, you know, I said, I have to do this. And wasn't talking about Capitola because he spends 365 days here. He was actually talking about the Lucille Packard Stanford Children's Hospital. And so the mayor and I went. I didn't know he was going, but I showed up and, oh, I know someone in the audience. It was truly a remarkable facility, truly a remarkable experience. They're doing so many things there to help families. It's truly amazing. But when you get down to it, you see kids in the operating room. I just saw stuff that just, God, if that was my kid, I would just, I would just hope they're in the hands of these particular doctors and staff there. Truly amazing. One little side note, I noticed this kid coming out of one of his rooms and it was, you know, a kid care place and he's sitting there with his little iPad tool or something like that. And so I asked about that and he told me that's one of the best things to give him something like that when they're trying to recover. They have remodeling efforts there so that parents could stay with their kids. They have special rooms right now, but as they go into further remodeling, they're going to have beds and stuff like that so parents can stay there 24/7. Truly remarkable spirit. We talked to many different departments and I've never seen so many people as concerned. It's just part of their life. It's almost like their mission. Wonderful experience. And that's probably the most important thing I did last week. I did go do Youth Violence Prevention Task Force meeting and I'm going to be talking to the chief about a few things that I have on my plate in regards to that. It is coming to Capitola in this area. It's an effort that comes out of United Way and the group of, what is it? The Crime Force Task Force, I think it is. That's where it came from. That's correct. Okay, so it actually came from a group that the police chief is part of. And so one of the major things that I'm focusing on is youth violence on a youth, on a neighborhood, on a neighborhood level. So how do you get youth in the neighborhood involved in activities that prevent them from getting engaged in violent activities? Thank you.
Begonia Festival is gearing up and so if any of you have any extra time and would like to volunteer for that this year, it is always a lot of fun and they're getting ready to begin on Saturday with a begonia sale right up the street at the corner of Capitola Avenue and Burlingame, Burlingame. And they went down to the begonia fields today and got begonia plants and they're going to be available Saturday morning. So stop by if you'd like to get some to begin your begonia collection to get ready for this summer.
Great, always a good idea. Dennis?
Fine, thank you.
Okay, I just have one thing real quick to talk about. Councilman Termini and I just left Paradise Beach Restaurant where right now Kerry Wetzel and Leslie, who own that restaurant, are hosting a dinner for 15 Operation Surf, they're not the Wounded Warriors, but it's a program like that. These are military men and women who have been injured. Some are amputees, double amputees. And they're invited here from all over the world to Santa Cruz County. They've been surfing in Santa Cruz the last three days and they're going to be here in Capitola surfing this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, starting at nine o'clock. But right now, they're treating them to dinner over there and we just went over there and welcome to our town. And it's, if you get a chance to go down to the beach and, and watch them have fun, that's what they're doing. They're here to have fun. They're so appreciative to be here and we're glad they're here. With that, we'll move on to reports from board to commissions. Any board or commission reports?
We had a library committee meeting that I was not able to attend, but I think perhaps the city manager can report on that.
I can't. I just wanted to really quickly, under, under comments, I just wanted to note that we have a new owner of the Capitola Mall. Merlon Guyer has purchased the mall from Mace Rich, who's owned it for the last little more than a decade, I believe. Looking forward to the new owners working with the city and the community to help determine what the future of the Capitola Mall could be so it remains an asset for us and a competitive asset for all of us. In addition, I just also wanted to offer kudos to the police department. They got, as the chief mentioned, the bank robber. He'd hit several banks around the county over the last couple of months and it was good to get him. I know it was under all of our skin that he wasn't, hadn't been apprehended yet. So kudos to them.
I'm sorry I cut you off on your comments. And before I go to the boards, does the public works, do you want, Steve, do you want to talk about any comments? Anything you want to update on staff comments?
We'll be paving tomorrow along the Espinade and Stockton Avenue on that project and then the next two weeks we'll complete the sidewalk portion of that work. And we should be paving next week out on 38th Avenue. And we're awarding contracts more today, so lots of work going on.
Good news for Capitola. Great, thank you for that. Okay, back to boards. Doc, do you have any boards to report on? Library board? Oh, library board.
So a little bit of activity on the library board tomorrow. I will be interviewing the three finalists for the library director position. This is as part of the countywide library system, which is real exciting. It's a very important hire for all of us, I think. Make sure we get somebody who's a good fit for our community and really understands libraries. So those interviews are taking place tomorrow. Our own local library commission met yesterday. We had a good meeting. We took a look at our timelines about how we can go from a fully funded project, which we expect to do in June with the successful passage of Measure S. And there was general consensus that the first step for the city would be to get a project manager on board to help guide the design, development, and construction of the project. So we will look to do that, hopefully, right after the successful passage of Measure S. I have no other updates on the other boards and commissions at this time.
Great. Stephanie, any boards? Dennis, you're good? Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. This is a part where items are usually been pre-approved and if, we usually do them all in one motion unless somebody would like to pull something from the consent calendar. Is there any council people who would like to pull an item?
I don't want to pull an item. I just want a clarification of my comments last meeting. And I mentioned, at least as reported, it was mentioned that a, a program to do Sharps and medicine recycling is going to be started. What should have been in the minutes, or what I should have said, rather, is that the industry, an industry agency is going to take that over. Currently, we do that in Capitola. Capitola Police takes medicine and controlled drugs are accepted, including, I believe, Sharps. CVS Pharmacy on 41st and Bay Avenue takes Sharps at this time. That's like needles and other things that could cause damage, like if they're left in a playground. And Loudon Pharmacy on 41st takes medicine and Sharps. So this community does have places for you to drop off old medicines. It's highly recommended that you don't dump them down the drain or put them in garbage. That has a deleterious effect on the environment, on the fish downstream and the leaching out of the dump, the dump sites like Buena Vista, for instance. So we do have those facilities, but with this new program sponsored by the industry, it's going to expand. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay, before I do that, is there anybody from the public that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, there's a motion for the second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That'll take us to the general government public hearings. And first on our agenda tonight is accept a report on the Capitola Wharf condition assessment and wharf resiliency study. That is being done by...
I'm going to start it off and we have a consultant here. So we'll get the screens up and running. We'll start as soon as Larry gets close to it. There we go. Apologize for the delay. Mr. Mayor and council members, the item before you tonight is a, a report on the condition of the Capitola Wharf. We commissioned this study in November. Brad Porter from Moffett Nickel is here and will be giving a presentation on the condition of the report. The purpose of determining the current condition was to try and figure out, A, are there any immediate needs out there? And B, what can we do to make the wharf more resilient to being so fragile when if we lose a single piling and have to close the whole wharf down and spend $100,000 to replace a single piling? Is there ways we can make it more resilient? This, a draft study of the report that's in your agenda was given to the Wharf Working Group and they went through it and we had a discussion and their ideas, one of their ideas besides just, you know, continue to maintain it and replace the pounds as they come, was to consider widening the wharf. That was not part of his, Moffett Nickel's original scope of work, so there is a item to be considered, whether we want to have them draft up some draft plans and scope of work for a widening project on the wharf. As part of that, we will need to check into the permitting, make sure that that's something that we'll be able to proceed with if we do go down that path. Before you, as we get to the end of the report, this is really going to focus on the conditions and resiliency. We will talk about a 10-year plan, putting together a 10-year plan for the wharf. And that's where we consider, well, how do we want to, how do, where do we want the wharf to be in 10 years from now? Things not covered in the report would be, do we want to make changes to the buildings out at the wharf? We've certainly talked about in the past, adding a new public restroom out there and expanding the restaurant into the existing restrooms. Other ideas would be utility upgrades, so moving all the utilities above the deck so that they're not so exposed to the sea and the waves. This year, we had both the electrical and sewer lines broken during high sea events where the gas line, which now we moved above the deck, was just fine. So that would be the object there. Anyway, I won't go on any longer. I'd like to introduce Brad Porter from Moffett Nickel, who was, I think, been around the wharf. He's been working on the wharf for about 15 years at least that I've been here. He has dove on the wharf. He's been around it and knows it quite well. Brad?
Yeah, good evening. Thanks, Steve. Yeah, I've worked for Moffett Nickel for about 18 years and one of the first projects I did was the inspection, the rebuild that was done in the late 90s. I've also done similar evaluations for the Seacliff Wharf and recently for the Santa Cruz Wharf, their major engineering evaluation. That's sort of the specialty that the firm that I work for does. This presentation is kind of just a summary of the report. I've drawn a lot of the figures and hopefully just the highlights from that. Next, please. As I talk, just sort of for reference and terminology, of course, here's the wharf. Shore is to the left. I don't know if you can read it, but oftentimes I'll talk about the rows of the piles for reference. We call those bents. There's approximately 80 of them. Those are numbered on the top there in tens. And then on the bottom, those markers are hundreds of feet. The wharf is about almost 850, 900 feet long. We talk about the, the components of the wharf. The narrow part that you walk out on from shore is the, what I would call the trestle and then the, the head of the wharf or the main part of the wharf. For the structure, down below, you've got, going from, you know, the top down, you have the decking, which is then supported by the timber beams underneath, I call stringers, and which in turn are supported by the large beams, pile caps that span between the vertical timber piles that support the, the wharf. So I'll be using some of these terms as we go along. So I performed the other condition assessment. Staff and I went out and went underneath the wharf and inspected all the piles and the superstructure above a couple of months ago, as I have done in the past. Overall, the wharf is in, you know, fair to good condition, which is fairly good. There's, below that would be what I would call in poor condition, critical, and then failed. So that overall for a timber wharf of this age is pretty good. These are just representative photographs up there on the upper right. I've got kind of a key plan. Those little blue dots are showing. Here's just a typical one of your trestle. One thing that's noteworthy is you only have the three piles that support the trestle, which is a, there's not a lot of redundancy there. The other photo out there is of the, it's out about the midpoint underneath the boat shop. That's the sewage ejector pump that we recently put those wave baffles on to help displace some of the wave energy that hits. Next, please. And then just out at the, the end of the wharf, the head of the wharf, there's those steel piles at the end. I'll talk a little bit more about those later. There's, you know, significant corrosion on those, but it's, it's nothing critical for the vertical support of the wharf.
The wharf is about almost 850, 900 feet long. We talk about the components of the wharf, the narrow part that you walk out on from shore is what I would call the trestle, and then the head of the wharf or the main part of the wharf. For the structure, down below, you've got, going from, you know, the top down, you have the decking, which is then supported by the timber beams underneath, I call stringers, and which in turn are supported by the large beams, pile caps that span between the vertical timber piles that support the wharf. As I'll be using some of these terms as we go along. So I performed the other condition assessment. Staff and I went out and went underneath the wharf and inspected all the piles and the superstructure above a couple months ago, as I have done in the past. Overall, the wharf is in, you know, fair to good condition, which is fairly good. There's, below that would be what I would call in poor condition, critical, and then failed. So that overall, for a timber wharf of this age, it's pretty good. These are just representative photographs up there on the upper right. I've got kind of a key plan, those little blue dots are showing. Here's just a typical one of your trestle. One thing that's noteworthy is you only have the three piles that support the trestle, which is a, there's not a lot of redundancy there. The other photo out there is of the, it's out about the midpoint underneath the boat shop. That's the sewage ejector pump that we recently put those wave baffles on to help displace some of the wave energy that hits. Next, please. And then just out at the end of the wharf, the head of the wharf, there's those steel piles at the end. I'll talk a little bit more about those later. There's, you know, significant corrosion on those, but it's, it's nothing critical for the vertical support of the wharf. Next slide. So in the near term, the things that need to be done, there's like three timber piles. On the bottom, I'm showing where those are. There's one on the trestle, and one out near the bait shop, and then the one on the west side outside the restaurant. Now, I mean, typically, there's two sources of damage to your timber piles. One is just deterioration from, you know, worms that, you know, over time. And there's only one pile at this time that we saw that really had a fair amount eaten out. And then the others, of course, impact damage from waves. Log that's coming down the river out in the bay, and in the waves is a battering ram that takes out, takes out your piles. And the photo there of the, on the lower right is showing that missing pile from below that creates, for the pile cap, quite a, what I would call a cantilever. You can only safely cantilever about six to eight feet. That's cantilevering about 15, to where the thing can just, if it were to get full of people up above, it could collapse. So that's why, so up above, they've placed a, what we call a strongback, that was spanned between the two adjacent bends. It's kind of hanging the cap, so it's not, it's not going to collapse in... Next slide? I'm sorry, back up. So, yeah, the cost to replace those piles, we would estimate around $70,000 to $100,000. And Steve had mentioned, you know, to replace, just to mobilize the crane out there for them to madder and so forth, you're going to pay, you know, $40,000 just to get the crane out there to drive the one pile, and that, that's one of the things that has happened over time. So the unit cost to replace those three is fairly high. Typically, a pile to replace is, you know, $15,000 if you're doing, you know, 10 or 20 or 30, but to replace those few, you have to pay that mobilization cost to replace those timber piles. Next, please. Then, the steel piles out at the end, you can see in the upper right-hand side, one of them is like totally corroded through. Now, that is a brace pile, or what I would call a batter pile. These were the ones that were installed, I think it was, what, in the 80s? And I think it was after the storm in like '82, '83 that there was a large waves. That was, I think, the winter of '83, '84 was a particularly harsh winter, and the end of the deck got overtopped, and I think a fair amount of it broke off. And after that, I think they had done these repairs, or I think the idea here was to really strengthen the end of the wharf with the steel piles to kind of act like a, maybe like a cow catcher on a train or something. How, I'll have to say that's fairly unique. I haven't seen this type of a repair done on wharfs, but I don't know if I would, if it needs to be replaced in kind, is the thought. But there's three of them that are, have corroded through and do need to get replaced, particularly the vertical one that, that brace pile is connecting to. And to replace, or you could, there's systems where we could jacket them, or there's like fiberglass jackets that get grout, and these are in the appendix in the report. But to replace them or to strengthen them, the cost is going to be about $150,000 to $250,000 for those three. Now, there's 12 of those steel piles out there that are, as you can see from the photos, are pretty corroded. And it appears to be up in the splash zone. The part within the inner tidal zone, that's from low water to high water, are not as bad, and I don't anticipate underwater that they would be as bad. Also, by way of background, I'm also a commercial diver, so I do a fair amount of underwater inspections of similar structures. And I wouldn't anticipate that underwater, the worst part is, I think, the part that's visible above. If you were to replace all 12 or repair them, I think your cost is going to be $400,000 to $700,000 to do all 12 of the steel piles. So as Steve was mentioning, I was also, in addition to identifying immediate deficiencies, to kind of look at what resiliency could be added to the wharf so that maybe you're not having to do emergency repairs of one or two piles. So, I'll talk a little bit about that. The first part of that is, and it doesn't quite show up so well, is to kind of look at where your damage has occurred, the piles being the most critical part of the wharf. So here, going from 1998 through the ones here, 2015, '16, the different colors, as you look at it, I mean, they are kind of spread throughout the wharf, but they tend to be more towards the west side where they have failed than on the east. I think that's just the predominant wave direction when you get the logs and things coming in. And they tend to be on the edge. That outer pile takes the log first, but not always. The pile that you lost here was in the middle of the trestle. Yeah, go ahead. And then, this is just a timeline on the top, or the, what I would call the significant damage that I'm aware of or that we've been involved with. And then on the bottom of the timeline are the major repairs that have been done. I had mentioned earlier in the early 80s that the south end had had significant overtopping and damage when I think the, and the 60 piles were replaced, and I think the steel piles were replaced then. And then we go along, and then in '94, it was overtopped, and then I think the major repairs were done in '99. That's the one that I, when I first became involved with the wharf. And then since then, there's been some overtopping and miscellaneous replacement of piles there in '09. Seven piles were replaced, and that ejector guard was placed on the below-deck sewage ejector. Let's see here. Okay. And I was going to say that, you know, for timber wars, there's sort of a pattern. You get about 50 years of relatively, you know, say 40 to 50 years of relatively maintenance-free life. And then, either you have to do constant maintenance, or something like Santa Cruz Wharf that's much larger, where they have a whole crew that's out there every day doing things. For a smaller wharf, it's just, it's not feasible to have a full-time staff that's doing daily maintenance, so that typically every 15 to 20 years, you'll have to do some kind of a major rebuild, replacement of piles, which I think you've seen since the 1980s. As I've mentioned, the most critical element, of course, is the piles. That's what's holding the whole thing up. This was, I think, in, I can't read the date, but yeah, 2002. Where here, this is the worst case, you lost all three piles that are supporting the trestle, and that's, I believe, the wharf had to be shut down there. The stringers, the way that they're typically framed is they just span from bend to bend, what we would call a simple span. So what happens is if you lose the support on one trestle, it, the only thing that's holding this up right now is it's kind of just being held from above by the decking, but if any significant load were to be put on that, the whole thing would just collapse. Certainly, if a truck were to drive across it, that would happen, and it would have to be closed. The secondary damages, well, what I would call secondary would be to the, you know, the utilities and the railings and things, that they don't threaten the structure of the wharf, but yeah, you might be without power or gas or water to where maybe the services would have to get shut down, but they don't threaten collapse. So the piles and the framing are really what we're focusing on for the resiliency. Next, please. So these are just, we had just discussed it within the company with other, you know, our firm is 400, we have offices, 20 offices, are, we discussed it and kind of came up with some ideas of what could be done to add some resiliency to it. I also spoke with some construction contractors, one who has done work out here on your wharf over time. One thought was to add pile jackets. There's a number of, and we're just, on the right here is a cross-section, it's like a fiberglass jacket that gets placed around the pile, and then steel reinforcement, like you would have in concrete. And then that annular space between the existing pile and the jacket is filled with grout, with the steel in there, so it's like a strengthening, a hardening that's added to the pile that would have it better withstand impact from logs. Second thought would be to add a second pile along the outside edge, just to provide redundancy and strength, so if a log hits it, that, yeah, there would be, there would be hopefully a backup that would not be taken out by the log. Next, please. Now, I was talking when we, there was showed that one trestle bend where all three piles were taken out, and I was talking about the simple span where if you lose the pile cap, it would just fall in. If you can make it so that your stringers are spanning across two bends instead of one, in that case, if, it's not critical, if you lose the entire bent below the pile row, below, it would not collapse. And it's similar to that photo of what I was showing earlier for that one that's failed out there at the end where they've gone above deck, and they're spanning across two bends with the strongback beams and then hanging the cap from, it's that same idea, but we would do it systematically so that it wouldn't collapse or be subject to collapse. You wouldn't have to close the wharf if you lost all three rows of piles. You would maybe limit your truck traffic or something like that, but it would, it wouldn't collapse. So on the top, one notion is you add a stringer that spans across the two bands, the two spans. So instead of like a 15-foot stringer, you have like a 30-foot stringer. That's the stringer added option. The one below would be to splice the stringers when they, where they meet at each bend, they, what we would call they have a lap joint, they, but, but they're really not connected to one another. They're only connected to the pile so they could, they could fall down. So if you stuck a steel plate and bolted it up, and there's kind of a detail I've got on the very bottom there, it's like a steel plate with six or seven, a robust bolting system, so that you're providing a real, strong connection between your stringers, so that if you, so they could span across if they lost the cap below. So we looked at, these are the four different concepts of what could be done to add resiliency to the structure of the wharf. And what I'm just showing here is I came up with some costs, and there's a whole gamut. So of the ones I was describing, just going down, if you did just the west side of the wharf, that's the blue line, and then the other alternative is if you did both sides of the wharf, recall that most of your damage comes from the west side, not always. So there's a whole range of options, and if you, to do just the west side of the wharf would be anywhere of a low cost of $150,000, or if you just added stringers along the west side on the outside, that's the $150,000 down there at the item three under the blue. To where if you went, if you added pile jackets all the way around the wharf, that would be $2.1 million, excuse me, just on the west side would be $2.1. And then the same alternative is if you went all the way around the wharf, the cost range would be $300,000 to $4.4 million. Quite a range, fairly high costs on the upper end, and still, there would be no guarantee that you would not sustain damage. You could still lose piles on the middle. But those are things that could be done. So I presented these, and as we were talking with the, with the wharf, with the wharf group, the idea came out of widening the trestle, and I think that would be, you're going to be getting, I think it's a great idea. You're going to be adding piles, and adding more piles is, from a resiliency standpoint, is great. So that even if you lose one or two, right now, when you have three piles, if you lose one, if it's an outside pile that you lose, and you've got a two-thirds chance of losing an outside pile, it's almost game over. You've got to close it until you can, can replace that pile. Whereas if you had, like the widening that you did, which we had, which we designed, that little part there at the beach, the upper left-hand photo, if you added three more piles, you would now have six piles per bend, a fair amount of redundancy. Another way, and the blue is what, there on the plan view, the top view, is the area, and the photo on the right, the right-hand side, that's kind of looking down that corridor where, where that would get added. But I think that that, I think the cost of doing that would be on the order of, we haven't done a cost estimate yet, but I think would be on the order of a million to $2 million. So kind of in the range of what you would be paying for some of these other resiliency concepts. You'd be getting a lot of protection, the trestle being your most vulnerable part, and you'd be getting added benefit from it. So that's another resiliency option to, you know, to consider. There would be, you know, permitting issues from the Coastal Commission, but since it's public access, I presume that it would stay public access. They tend to look favorably upon that. You know, Santa Cruz has just done their master plan, and they're going to be adding quite a bit to the, to their east side for public access. And from what I could see from the Coastal Commission's reaction, that was viewed, you know, favorably. So that's kind of the end of my...
So I just wanted to go over the options for us moving forward. On the short term, we need to look at doing the repairs of the existing pilings, which, depending on the scope and how many we want to go after, could be $250,000 to $1 million. In the long term, we'd like to develop this 10-year plan and get direction from the council to consider which resiliency options you want us to kind of focus on. Is it the pile strengthening? Is it the widening? Is it the stringer strengthening? We should also talk about building improvements in this 10-year plan and utility improvements, as I previously mentioned. Upon approval of, we're receiving direction tonight, staff will obviously work Moffett Nickel. If we do want to look at the widening option, there's a proposal in there to get some details on that, ask for your approval of that if we're going to look at widening. And then we will develop the projects and go out and try and find some grant funding for it. There's several agencies that have some grant programs. There's specifically project-based, we have to go to them with a project scope. Here it is, there'll be a matching fund that we have to do, but we can start trying to tie down some grant funding to apply to the wharf. So that's our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mike?
You did mention that the three piles will cost roughly $40,000 to $50,000 apiece because of mobilization, for sort of small number of piles. And yet, for the 12-pill replacement, it seems to still be $50,000 a pile. At what point do we get the economy of scale?
Well, okay, the reason for that...
Is that because of the jacketing?
No, it's because those are steel piles. Steel are far more expensive than timber piles.
And you would recommend replacing the steel piles with like and kind? They haven't seemed to serve us as well as we might have thought.
Yeah, no, no, I, I don't know that I would recommend that. It was, I think if you actually look at those, the unit cost of those are lower, that is the, for the steel piles?
I didn't get that, because it was up around $450,000 for 12 piles.
Well, okay, if it...
Seven fifty.
Well, okay, 12, if they were $50,000 each times 12, that would be $600,000.
Correct. But you, but three piles, you know, because of the mobilization of the crane...
Right.
We talked about that $50,000 could be spread over 10 piles being less, and I've yet to see it be less. It looks like whether we get three piles or whether we get 30 piles, we're still paying $50,000 a pile. Is that fact, or am I not doing my math right?
Well, on the bottom, again, okay, if it was $50,000 each on the bottom to replace all 12, at $50,000 each times 12, that would be $600,000?
I got that.
Okay.
Go back to the slide for me, would you? Three timber piles, 70 to 100.
Okay.
Forty of that is mobilization.
Right, right.
So we do 10 of those, we should save money. And yet, are we talking about because they're steel piles?
Correct.
We're not going to get the economy of scale?
Well, no, no, you still do get the economy of scale, but your unit cost for, okay, to buy a timber pile, a timber pile's about $4,000 to $5,000 to buy it. To drive it is about, you know, $7,000 to $8,000 or more. Steel pile to buy and to coat and everything is more like about $25,000 just to buy the material.
Are we able to jacket the steel piles, like we would the wood?
You, well, you, you, yes, you can, yes, you could. Yes, you could. And in fact, in the report, the appendix, I show such a jacketing system.
I mentioned, because I was at the wharf group meeting, and you did mention that.
Yeah.
So that is, that's a very viable option, and you feel pretty good about the jacketing technology and...
Yes.
We could save, you know, future pain and suffering?
Yes, absolutely. No, it's fiberglass, it's a pretty robust system. It's been used, it's been used a fair amount. It certainly can be done.
That's the only question I have.
Can we see the sewer line on that picture?
Can we see the sewer line on that picture? Or any of the pictures that we have? I would just want to make sure that, that whatever we do, that we have that as secured as possible so we don't have a break and a leak. I mean, there's not that much sewage in it, but it would be a terrible environmental problem if we did that. We'd also be subject to fines by the Regional Water Quality Control Board.
It should be one of the ejector...
Yeah, yeah.
The ejector pump sits on this platform right here. It's really hard to see because it has a black baffle around it now, so it's really hard. So it goes from here, and then it is hung, I think this could be part of the sewer line. Hard to tell if it's that or a pile cap. Anyway, this is the ejector pump station, and then it does hang between the pile caps and the stringers as it goes back to shore. So it, it does break on occasion, and we're out there fixing as quick as we can.
Yeah, if we're doing some work out here, that's a perfect opportunity to, to fix it a little bit, shore it up a little bit, whatever. The last time we talked about this, I remember we had a discussion about concrete versus wood and what would it look like. So we'll have that discussion again, you know, but...
Are we talking about the deck?
No, no, the pilings. We were, we were talking about the pilings and whether we wanted it, would change, I remember you brought it up, that it would change the look of it significantly if we went from wood, timber, to all steel. And we should just look at that and just be aware of that, you know, and talk about that.
We'll have that conversation.
Yes, yeah.
Dennis, any questions?
No, I, I have lots to say, that's why we have to, the public speaks on it.
No questions.
Yeah, just starting with, the ocean always wins, so you're fighting...
We'll come back and have that conversation.
An animal that's relentless.
I just have one question before I allow the public to weigh in, and it's just, in the portion where you were widening, it looked like it was actually, I mean, from the perspective, it looked like it was doubling the width. And my question is, when you do that, are you, are you replacing the stringer all the way across so it's connected, or would it be two separate stringers, independently, or how, which the, how would that work?
Um, to be determined, but I would, the, I think it actually would be, I would call it the paddle cap.
It would be the cap, correct.
Yeah, the paddle caps. Yeah, I would think you would connect it. Generally, the, the more you connect it, the better. What you would probably do is just butt them and then do splice plates between them.
Okay.
Either four-by-12s that are bolted, or you can do steel splice plates.
Something like those other connectors that you were showing for, for the stringers?
Yeah, exactly.
Similar to that.
Right, right.
Okay, all right.
Because basically, at the head of the wharf, that's what you do anyway, is it's not one continuous cap across, or there's, there's splices.
They're connected, okay.
Yeah.
Great. Question?
Yeah, I did have one question. So you note that the damage to the steel is on the upper levels, where I guess you get splashed and stuff like that. So if you did a splice connection where you're lapping the stringers, and that's going to be steel, and how do you protect that so that doesn't corrode?
Um, the steel plates that you would, where you do the lapping and you're trying to connect them? Okay. Well, there's a couple of different ways. One way is you make them out of 316 stainless steel, which is, will stand up. It's very pricey. Or you add thickness to it, just have a corrosion allowance. I mean, if you use like half-inch plate or, you know, 3/8 inch plate, that's pretty, that's a lot of steel. Coated, there's some good coatings that are out there. Now, polyurea is a pretty robust coating. We did a new pier up at Trinidad, I designed that, and we used steel piles there with a polyurea coating, and it's, it's holding up quite well. Coatings or going with a higher-grade metal.
Okay. And then logs ramming up against a coated pile, how about the effectiveness of the fiberglass to withstand that?
Um, well, I mean, it's, it's not bulletproof, but it is fairly abrasion resistant, but on the inside, there's a grout, a chemical grout, that is fairly resilient, and you have the reinforcing steel in there. So it gets, it's fairly abrasion resistant. Another thing we were looking at is similar, similar to the piles that were used on the, on the widening that you had done, those are like a high-density polyethylene over steel. That was another option we had looked at on the timber piles, is doing like a HDP, high-density polyethylene, which is like the hard black plastic pipe over it, which is very abrasion Anyway, to answer your question, yeah, the fiberglass is fairly abrasion resistant, but it's not, still, if you get a two-foot log coming in there in a high wave, it's probably going to crack it.
It's abrasion you're more concerned about rather than impact?
No, it's both. No, it's really impact that we're, that we're concerned with. And adding the, the, like I say, the grout with the steel reinforcement and the fiberglass jacket, is like an entire system, will increase your strength by probably three times over the timber. I think it would be, it would stand up a lot better to impact, but it's, it's no guarantee.
Like investments?
I'm sorry?
It's like investments.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you for the presentation. I'll go ahead and open it up with the public now. If anybody would like to come up and weigh in on the wharf, we'd love to hear what you had to say. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. Dennis?
In 1938, and Carolyn could have done some good documentation for us, in 1938, the whole midsection of the pier disappeared. And I don't know if that's a El Nino time, but El Nino does have, in periodic times over 50 years, when it comes by, is when we seem to have the wharf damage. And we, we were pretty fortunate this year, we, we sustained very little damage considering what we went through. And in 83, it wasn't so. And in fact, the whole end of the pier disappeared. And what, what happened was, is that Doug Messini, local architect, came out and talked to the engineers, says, "Well, why don't we shape it like the bow of a boat?" Start talking about that. And today, that's why that's shaped like that. And the refraction, that's where the steel pilings, I think, came up, came from. So, um, the, the time that Stephanie and I were talking, we're talking about it, was is that we had some engineers come along, we were talking about the idea that what, and by engineering standards today, what would the wharf have to do? Well, it would have to be raised another 10 feet higher than it is now to get out from the wave, the wave inundation that it goes through now. And right now, all of us have seen the crest of a wave as high as the decking on, on the pier. So to get above that, they say you would have to, well, there's a lot of problems with that. Number one, it changes the appearance of the pier completely. Number two is, is how do you get up onto the pier? There's no room to go back in the road to raise the road, so you have to go from the beginning of the pier and raise up 10 feet. So a real difficult rebuilding. The other, the other thing is, is that we have historical structure here. And so the visual character of it is important to our community, and that's who we identify with. So we have to live with the fact that, that we have, we're going to be battling the sea for, for years to come. It's going to happen to us every 40 or 50 years, we're going to go through an El Nino, we're going to do that. But at this point, you know, since I've lived here, I've seen two times that it's sustained fairly significant damage. And I, I think it's now is the time that we, we can't piecemeal this anymore. We need to set up a program, and what is suggested here by staff is, is that we look at a 10-year program that gives some stability and some, some length of, of life to this pier of ours, how it looks now, and give it, and think 10 years, I mean, yes, it's going to cost us $10 million to do this, this whole thing. It's not going to cost us $2 or $3 million. This is an expensive project. But if we have an organized plan by the city to do that and have the commitment to it, I think that there's outside help out there that'll, that'll come along and help us with this thing. The Coastal Conservancy last time in 83 helped us out. They helped us rebuild the pier. So I, I do think there's help out there. I think widening the pier is a good idea. It, it not only gives more public use, but also, also gives, gives some stability to the, to the west side we're having all the problem with now. And you can watch what happens is that wave, the wave movement, the way it comes in now is it hits, hits the bluff now, where our road and, and riprap is, and comes, and comes, the waves come sideways through there. The logs that are coming out of the river don't ever hit the pier. The ones, the logs that we see are coming from the San Lorenzo River, San Lorenzo River and coming down, because, because all the lateral drift is to the, is to the east. So I, I, you know, I really think that we have to think long-term with it now, instead of just piling here and piling there. We have to, we need a program from our engineers to come back with, give us a 10-year plan of how we can make this, make this pier to, to its potential and keep it there for a period of time. That's my suggestion.
Michael, I agree with everything Dennis just said. I think we had a, we're slightly leaning towards this because we sat through the meeting and went in, really in depth with this report. Walked around, being in the wharf group, walked around the wharf a lot. I think that we need to give staff direction, and we also have to give staff an indication that we're serious about the wharf. We ignore it year in, year out, until someone comes and tells us it's closed because the pilings are gone. They need a direction, and in addition to what Dennis said, we need the city manager to bring us a funding mechanism. Has to start with this year's budget. If we have to increase the wharf fund dramatically for matching funds to help us get a grant, that's a good start, but I think a long-term funding mechanism is important, and we need to have the city manager bring us that.
Yeah.
I might add, our treasurer is not here, but in the absence of Christine, it was mentioned and approved by the Finance Advisor Committee that we include a significant effort on the wharf, wharf improvement. So it hadn't been finalized, but we felt that it was such an important aspect of the city, and as Dennis said, there's an historic element to the city that depends a lot on the wharf. And fixing something that's broken is a heck of a lot more than keeping it up and doing it right. So I think the Finance Committee is going to make that recommendation, so I can't, you know, say it at this point, but we did have that discussion. We feel it's very significant for Capitola.
Well, we all love the wharf. When we did the general plan the last time, we asked people what they love about Capitola. Overwhelmingly, they said the wharf, and then when we said, "When was the last time you were out there?" Oh, well, they weren't out there very often. People don't go out there very often. But it is such a treasure, and we all love it. We do need to take good care of it. So I think widening it would be great. I think redoing the restaurant will be terrific, and the bathrooms, getting modernized will be wonderful. And I was out there one day last week, in the morning, about 10 o'clock, every bench was taken with, with young fishermen, young and old fisher, fisher people. People were having, it was a beautiful day, 10 o'clock in the morning, middle of the week, people are out there having a great time. I was, I was surprised to see so many people, but they were, they're, you know, really enjoying it, and, and whatever we can do, you know, to help it, I think is great.
Yeah, another comment?
One of my songs, one of my favorite songs is Sitting By The, On The Dock By The Bay. And I grew up in San Francisco, and we have our tradition of sitting on the docks and fishing. And ever since I've been a kid, we play by the docks, we, we went out there for picnics, we brought our dates out there. It's like a tradition in San Francisco, in San Francisco. And incidentally, when I talk to people and say, "I'm from Capitola now," they say to me, "God, I go there all the time to fish." And I'm out there on the weekends, and my family just looks for it. I taught my sons and daughters how to fish out at the Capitola Pier. So our pier has a lot of roots in this community. Thank you.
Yeah, I've, I've nothing to add. I agree with, with everything that was said. We all know it's a treasure, and what we, we found out tonight is, it's an expensive treasure. And it's, what I would really be saddened, I think we all be saddened, is if the wharf wasn't here, Capitola wouldn't have the same look and appeal that, that we have. So someone at, at some point in time in this city, whether it's this city council or a future one, is going to have to make a giant step or, or some recommendation to, you know, to make the commitment to fund a project. And I'm, I'm really, I want to say a little discouraged, because we were talking in estimates $2,000, $3,000, $4 million, and it wasn't completely redoing the whole wharf, it was just a portion of it. So it's a very expensive project. I can't see Capitola not having the wharf, and if it's our time to make a commitment to fix it, then I think that we might have, I'm hopeful that we have people to go along with our recommendations. So do we need a motion on this, or just some guidance?
Can I get a motion to, to pay for the widening plan development, $6,300 out of the wharf fund?
I'll make, I'll make that motion, Stephen, along with that, to give guidance to you and the engineer to come up with a 10-year program for us. Give us a 10-year program, what we need to do in 10 years to, for a restoration project.
Second, and a second friendly amendment that we'd also request from the city manager, potential funding sources, either from our budget, CIP. I mean, we don't want to let our roads go to fix the wharf, but we need some way to get in, at least for matching funds for grants.
That's fine. Thank you.
One, one last question for the consultant. When's the last time you were, you, you have taken a look under the water there? Have you been down there at all in the last few years at all?
Under the water or under the wharf?
Under the wharf, underwater, to dive down there to check it out.
To dive, we did not dive it. We, we look at it at low tide, at a, at a good minus tide or something. So no, we have never dove it. However, I would just say that we did dive Santa Cruz Wharf, all 4,500 piles of it.
Yeah.
In my experience, I mean, you're going to see 90%, if you go to a good low tide, just the nature for deterioration from the wharves, you're going to see it at a good low tide, which is when we looked at yours, and we did find one that did, was eaten out. Anyway, to answer your question, I have not dove. We did have that as a, as an optional service in our proposal. It's, diving's fairly expensive. But anyway, no, we've not dove the piles.
Okay, and the reason I bring it up is, on the countywide recycling committee years ago, we talked about one of the things we need to clean up is the area underneath the wharves, because people throw chairs and bottles and junk and all kinds of stuff. So they did dive underneath the, this wharf, and they picked up a bunch of stuff, and I mentioned it here, but I think they said that people here said that they have, they have gone down there and there wasn't a lot of junk. But I'd like to take a look at it, have somebody take a look at it, a professional person take a look at it, just in case there is a lot of junk down there now. The other, the other thing is, it does create fish habitat, so, but, you know, just in terms of cleaning up the ocean of, of junk, if there's junk down there that we don't want, you know, we should take a look at it. We don't want anybody, you know, getting hurt on glass or, you know, broken glass or anything, but if there's, if there's trash or junk or, you know, bad things down there, you know, I would say, let's, let's take this opportunity to, you know, have a professional diver down there and get rid of it.
Sure, well, that's something we certainly, certainly can do.
Try and make friends with the fishermen and the snags, that they're going to...
I don't know. It was, you know, it was just a, a thing that we were all talking about 10 years ago, and we just said, you know, if we're clean, trying to clean up the environment, hey, let's look underneath there, and if that's something that we should do, we could do it. If not, it's fine, you know.
Yeah. I'll give you a little anecdote. When we dove to Santa Cruz, it was three weeks long, of course, that's, it's a very big wharf. We didn't find a lot of junk down there. One thing I did when we were down there, at the end, there was a, a printer, an HP printer, like, you know, a desktop. That's the only junk for that.
Monterey used to have an annual, too, wasn't it?
I'm sorry?
They've got an ink, wasn't it?
I should have checked.
Monterey used to have an annual dive cleanup down there, because they have a, they have a wharf there, where you can, trucks will drive to the end, and people will push washing machines and all kinds, it's crazy stuff. So they have an, they used to have an annual dive there, and then have, you know, prices for the smallest thing and the largest thing, the most unusual thing, but they would find lots of junk down there.
Are you okay with adding that on to your motion?
Yeah, fine, I'd just like to make one statement before...
Thank you.
Along with this, obviously, we want to take a, a long-term look at the uses on the pier and also how we treat the pier. And I've had a problem through my lifetime of, of the amount of cars that go out on there. There's no need to have that many. Even the, even, even the fishing industry there can survive very well without doing boat launches. They may do four or five boats. We've got a harbor that's easy to, there's no reason to bring a truck out there with a boat to launch it off that pier. It's more difficult to do, and it's a parking issue, too, because they leave, they leave trailers out there that take public space. That's a public space and to me, cars driving out there is like driving on a sidewalk. You know, and also it takes a lot of wear and tear on that decking out there. A lot of it's caused because of cars going over there. So uses, how we use the pier and what, and what services we provide out there need to be looked, looked at along with a 10-year program.
That'd be another agenda item for us, pier use, how does that come into what we're doing now?
Well, I know when, if you, in the report, we detail how to make it protect the deckboards from cars and traffic like that. If we want to do a look at all the uses and mainly whether we're going to allow cars on there, we should probably talk about it at the wharf group. I'd recommend deferring it to the wharf group and then we can bring back a report.
You okay with that, Dennis? Fine. Any other comments before I call the question? Yes, go ahead.
Terms of wharf use, you know, with this attention to the wharf, there's, there's an aspect that maybe, you know, more citizens could get involved in that. There are other ways to use the wharf that could be, you know, more active. Recently, well, it doesn't happen anymore, but down by the cement ship, I mean, there was quite an organization, a lot of people that were connected with that. They had yearly, annual celebrations and stuff like that. So we don't do that here, but maybe there is something, maybe our historical group could, historical group could come up with some ideas that might be very beneficial for the city.
We have a wharf-to-wharf race.
We have a wharf-to-wharf race, but you know what I mean.
That's the only celebration.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second and a friendly amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Okay, our next item is, we have an appeal of a planning commission approval of a design permit and variance for a garage addition to a single-family home located at 4980 Garnet Street. This will be Ryan presenting?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Before you is an appeal of a previously approved design permit and variance permit for a garage addition and minor remodel at 4980 Garnet Street. The project has been appealed due to the variance, the front yard setbacks. The existing two-story home was located in the R1 single-family zoning district in the jewel box neighborhood. Here you can see the existing and proposed front facade of the home. The proposed home addition includes converting the existing two-car garage into, sorry, the existing two-car carport into a garage, replacing the existing decks with smaller decks and creating a new entryway along the front elevation. The applicant is seeking a variance to extend the proposed garage six feet into the required 20-foot front yard setback. So the existing carport, shown in blue on the left, is non-conforming in that it does not meet the front yard setback requirement of 20 feet and is not large enough to contain a conforming 20-foot deep covered parking space. The existing carport is set back 19 feet from the property line and the interior is only 15 feet in depth. In order to enclose the existing carport and create the two conforming covered parking spaces, the applicant is requesting a variance to extend the existing carport five feet. The finished garage would then have a 14-foot front yard setback. The applicant is proposing two covered parking spaces within the garage. Although the plan would create two full-size covered parking spaces, shown in blue, the new garage would increase the existing non-conforming front yard setback. The uncovered parking spaces in the front of the home would decrease from 19 feet to 14 feet in depth, shown in red. It should be noted that there is an additional 12 feet of unutilized right-of-way between the property line and the curb. As proposed, the garage will be located 26 feet from the curb. So the next two slides contain images provided by the applicant, which show massing of the proposed garage addition in blue, as viewed from the neighboring property to the west. The new garage is proposed under the existing deck. It should be noted that the area of the deck will become narrower and decrease in size, but continue to extend six feet past the front of the home. This image shows the view from the second story of the neighboring property, looking down on the proposed addition. And again, that blue is where the new garage addition will be. After considering the staff report and testimony from the applicant and members of the public, the planning commission voted unanimously to approve a design permit and variance request. The planning commission based their decision on the fact that the project will not be the grant of a special privilege due to the non-conforming setbacks of neighboring properties and that the subject property will be able to utilize the sidewalk exempt right-of-way in front of their property for uncovered parking. The planning commission felt that the impact on the neighborhood was minimal and that the project would enhance the existing character of the neighborhood by enclosing the existing carport. Excuse me. On February 16th, 2016, the city received an appeal of the planning commission decision. The appeal cites concerns with the impact to the existing character as it relates to the uniformity of the surrounding neighborhood and that the garage variance would constitute the granting of a special privilege. So the first portion of the appeal, the appellant identified concerns that the proposed garage enclosure and front yard setback encroachment would have a negative effect on the character and uniformity of the existing neighborhood. They state specifically that currently the homes on this block line up visually as a result of the setback ordinance. From a cursory review, staff found that there are 12 other properties along Garnet Street that do not meet the front yard setback requirements. The appellant also contends that the three non-compliant homes within the same block of Garnet Street, which are over on the right side, so 4955, 5005 and 5080, so they claim that these properties should not be considered because they are older houses. However, they are a part of the existing built form along Garnet Street and are representative of the existing neighborhood character. Although the three properties are not identical in nature to the subject property at 4980 Garnet Street, they similarly benefit from reduced setback requirements. The appellant also identified concerns that the variance approval constitutes a granting of a special privilege as the existing parcel contains sufficient space to incorporate the new garage within allowable setbacks by pushing the entire home into the rear yard. That area is highlighted in green. The applicant requested the variance in order to avoid a major renovation of the home. Without the variance, the applicant would need to relocate the existing stairwell located behind the back wall of the garage, it's highlighted in blue, which would then require the applicant to demolish and rebuild much of the existing first and second floors. Although there are no special circumstances applicable to the subject property in terms of size, shape or configuration, several other properties in the vicinity and under identical zoning enjoy privileges of decreased front yard setbacks. Staff recommends that the city council uphold the planning commission decision, approval of the variance due to the existing non-conforming setbacks throughout Garnet Street, the presence of 12 additional feet of unutilized right-of-way between the property line and the curb, and because the garage enclosure will complement the existing character of the neighborhood. That's the end of my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Question is of staff.
You don't happen to have a streetscape photo, do you? Based on streetscape? I know there was one in the planning commission when the applicant applied to planning.
Okay.
It's happening rapidly.
Yeah. The neighboring property is blocked out, so you won't be able to see it. So go down a little bit more to the other way.
You had it with the first bite?
Yeah, so then scroll to the left. No, too far.
Far. There we go.
So right there. So there's the existing house to the left of the blurry home.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
I went out there and inspected and talked to neighbors. The house that's making the application, I note that if you're looking at the front of the house, there's a house to the left of it seems to be almost exactly the same in terms of its encroachment, the porch on the second floor and stuff like that. So there's very, it's very similar, it seems to me. Is that your finding?
Can you get that here?
Yeah, yeah, so.
So the garage on that one did meet the 20-foot setbacks, but yeah, the porch does come out a little bit further than the garage.
Okay. I just have some general questions about, you know, from a city planning standpoint, especially since we're going through zoning, what's the general feeling about the need for a sightline? From the city planning standpoint, how did this concept come up and why is it important to the look and the feel of the neighborhood? What's your take on that?
When you refer to sightline, are you speaking, are you speaking about sight distance for, to the roadway?
Well, if you're, yeah, if you have the 20-foot setback and you're standing, let's say at that 20-foot at your doorstep, for instance, and you look to the right and the left, you have the sense that you can see all the way to the right and all the way to the left because everything is following a consistent pattern of a setback.
We do have standards to provide adequate sight distance. We call it a kind of a sight prism, I believe. I don't know, the specification's off the top of my head, but 20-foot setback provides that plus quite a bit. It's not that deep into the lot.
Is it uniform 20-foot or can it be 10 feet or, I mean, what's, is there a standard there? I'm just trying to get a sense of why that.
Well, I mean, so depending on the property size, the front yard setback may be slightly reduced. Properties in sidewalk exempt areas do have an 18-foot setback versus 20 for the garage. Yeah.
Okay. And what's the sense, I read the staff report, this is a non-conforming parking area, okay? So what's the sense about, you know, the difference between neighborhoods that have carports and those who have covered garages with, you know, the garage door and stuff like that? In terms of the neighborhood field, do you have a sense of that and why we have one as opposed to the other? Why do we call the carport a non-conforming?
So both carports and garages are allowed under the current code. During our discussions with the planning commission, they've indicated preference that the new code discourage carports in favor of garages. This particular carport is perfectly fine, except it just isn't deep enough to accommodate a typical-sized car. So it was probably permitted back in the day before we had the standards that are in place currently. So it's undersized by current code standards.
Any other questions? I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. I'd like to begin with the applicant first, if they'd like to come up and make a presentation.
Good evening, I'm David Aaron. That's my wife Deb over there and we are the happy owners of 4980 Garnet Street. We acquired the property back in October, November of last year and we've been working towards today diligently. So we're excited and thank you for Ryan and Katie and members of the community development department who've assisted us, the planning commission for their work and also the mayor and city council. So thank you for your consideration. When we decided that we wanted to buy this house and make some additions, the first thing that came up was, you know, where are we going to park the cars? And so, you know, we thought, given the amount of space with the 20-foot setback, that bringing out the garage was just the logical thing that made sense. The garage is going to sit fully within, under the existing eight-foot, excuse me, six-foot deck. So from a visual perspective, the house is already sort of, sort of out there, as it were. As Ryan indicated, there are 12 homes in the immediate area that have setbacks, also have setbacks at 15 feet. But I'll note that that doesn't reflect all of the houses that are in fact not observing the 20-foot setback. So our house, for example, is at 19 feet and I'm sure there are others. So he's identified the ones that will have setbacks as, at 15 feet or less, but there are others, you know, sort of with, I'm sure that ours being one, between sort of that 15 and 20 feet already. So we don't view, we didn't view this as a special privilege for us. In fact, four of the 13 houses on the immediate block of Garnet Street don't have the 20-foot There was some question about whether we could move the house in a backwards direction, but actually it's not feasible. The staircase sits immediately behind the garage right now and basically would interrupt the whole flow of the house. It would be very expensive to move that staircase. We like the flow of the house and we, you know, we're hoping to keep that. So anyway, we're appreciative of your consideration and if you have any questions, I'm certainly available.
Okay, great. Thanks for that presentation.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the public like to talk on this issue? Now's your time.
Good evening, my name's Jan Calderella. This is my husband Rick and we're the neighbors on the other side. And I've been thinking about this since we've had the planning commission meeting and really trying to understand the point of view of the planning commission because at first the variance wasn't even detected. So, you know, that was a little bit odd. You know, the, obviously the applicants understood the rules of the city, so there was no guarantee they were ever going to be granted a variance. So really understanding is there would have been maybe a time where there would have been a trade-off had to have been made. When we look at the house and the construction that's already started, started about two weeks ago, you know, the house is fully gutted on the inside. So minor remodel, you know, we've been through a lot of remodels in our house, have had to conform to a lot of the new standards since we bought the house. We've been there over 30 years, you know, we've had a carport next to us for 30 years. You know, when we looked at the planning commission and the different members and their substantiation for their ruling, I just, I'm finding it difficult. So I've been really looking for some guidance on where the leadership is because, you know, one of the comments was, you know, the carport, it's a preference. I think it's in the eye of the beholder whether that's preferred over, you know, what the applicant is asking for. They don't live in the neighborhood, you know, we do, so I think it's a little bit of an opinion. The other member claimed that the deck space was reduced and that that was a reason for them voting in favor. You know, I find that a little bit challenging because it really was a trade-off for them to gain more living space. So I don't feel like that was a very substantiated action or decision. The other gentleman actually felt pretty, pretty much that he was really leaning toward, you know, not giving it, but he deferred to the, Mr. Welsh, who I believe is the head of the commission. And, you know, and his response was, he's a car guy and that's why he was going to grant it. And I just find all of those really difficult ways to substantiate the ruling. There has been another neighbor in the neighborhood who has a carport, who wanted to enclose it and was denied a permit. So again, having that, you know, it's a little bit challenging to understand why the decision is being made here. There is the ability to extend the house in the back. I don't know if the terms of moving the whole house in the back are correct. I'm not a contractor, but from the contractor people we know, it was not moving the whole house to the back, it was extending it in the back. And again, there were, there were variance laws in, in the city, they've been here and so a builder would know what they are and a homeowner would understand that there would be maybe an opportunity that they wouldn't get their variance. And so it just seems like, everything seems a little bit challenging because the variance wasn't detected and when we were, when we notified the planning commission of it, they were very supportive and then that changed very quickly. And so at the planning commission, it was even brought up that the 12 homes in the neighborhood, that was a bit of a stretch, that really there's three on this block. You know, one of them's multifamily, one of them is grandfathered in and the other one is just, was too small. So even the planning, even the people in the planning commission felt that that argument was not a very good argument. So, you know, at the end of the day, I do feel like it's difficult to understand the validity of why it's being approved. It's really not clear. It feels like the arguments are weak in substantiation and when we talk about fairness, I think there's also fairness to the people that have lived there, to myself and our neighbors. And I just don't feel like I'm seeing the equity here. So anyway, that's, I think I'm over my time, so thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
Hi, I'm Brett Gressley. I live at 5010 Garnet Street and when I first saw the plans, I was concerned, I'm actually here really to support the neighborhood. We have a great neighborhood, everyone gets along. I've been there 19 years. I'd like that to keep going, include the Arons into that mix as well and keep that going. However, when I looked at the original plans, I was concerned initially on the, on the garage setback, but I focused more from my personal point of view was that they moved the front door became the rear door. Now, I didn't, have you, I see these plans, I don't see those changes, that you were going to put a side door in at some point became the new front door, but I don't know if that's going to happen. Okay, it's not part of these plans, is that right?
Brett, you need to go ahead and address us and then you can ask questions, we can call him back.
So anyway, that was our concern and then, and then the, also the change to the stairs in the back, those are going to come basically down by our bedroom. Anyway, you might need to build a privacy shelter or something on the back. But in general, I also have an issue with the process. As Jan pointed out, initially, the planning commission missed the key, that this is a variance. That needs to be addressed in general. You guys need to review your processes and fix this. If there's a variance, you need to identify it and identify it upfront. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other comments on the public? Okay, we'll bring it back for council.
Question for staff, would you walk me through the, one of the things that I missed in reading all this and listening to the hearing was, the planning department missed the variance on the, or the community developer missed the variance on the application?
So, when the application first came in, over the counter, staff identified it as needing an administrative design permit, which was correct, but did not notice the encroachment by enclosing the carport. So we corrected that, re-noticed it for a planning commission hearing with a variance. That was done per procedure, and the planning commission considered it.
So it was re-noticed prior to the planning commission meeting?
Correct.
And it was listed in the notice that a variance?
Correct.
Okay, good. That's, thanks for clarifying that. Are you going to start the discussion, or we just have some questions?
Oh, I can, my, my discussion's easy. And to be very clear, the basis for a variance is very cut and dry. And the primary, for good or for bad, is that we grant a variance if other homes in the neighborhood have enjoyed the same variance. And the neighborhood is more than just that single block. I think we all walked the jewel box enough, and specifically for this project, to realize that this is not an unusual occurrence up there. And it goes beyond the 12 homes in the immediate vicinity. So, based on the existence of other homes having enjoyed the front yard setback variance, and from the plans, not believing that the, this remodel will significantly detract from the character of the neighborhood, I would move to uphold the planning commission's decision.
I have a question or two. So it's been brought up that another neighbor-
Second for discussion.
Second for discuss, okay. It's been brought up by public comment that another neighbor had applied for a covering of their carport, and I checked out the address, that's 1515, and I think you did some investigation, and that never actually came to an application?
Yeah, so, you had given me a call a couple hours before the hearing. I dug through the different archived files, scanned files, and hard copy files that we have on site, and we didn't have anything for 1515 Lincoln. So, I don't know where that idea came from.
Okay. So I did get, you know, I did get a look at the, the property, a neighbor did show it to me. So, in fact, an application may have been started, but it never was completed, and there was never any hearing on it. Okay.
It's hard to say what happened back then.
Okay, but there's no records of anything at this point? Okay. I'd like you to go, if you can, to slide six. It gives a view of the, down the street. So my understanding is that one neighbor said they wouldn't be able to see cars coming if they looked, I guess, to the right, and that they would obscure their view. So what I see here is that there's a lot of bushes of vegetations, and they've never ever been able to really see down that way. But I could see how the building, if it's put in place, will be a wall. I can see that, yes.
What work's being done on it now, and is there a permit for that?
It's an interior remodel, it's a building permit, they do have the permit.
Well, my comments are that I do not like variances at all, and rarely ever support them. But if they make sense, then it's all right. And I think this one makes sense. My only concern is, somebody that has a smaller parking place, and then buys a big giant car and then sticks out in the street. You know, if you've got a little parking place, you know, then get a little car, because that's all you have room for. So, but my feeling is, if it's parkable on the lot and it works, okay. Are they going to paint the outside and do any outside work on this also with this? And change any other?
Significant.
Yeah.
I'll direct that to the applicant.
Yeah. I think it'll be an improvement.
You have an elevation of the new, the new structure, do you know? There it is.
Yeah. Well, that doesn't look at all like it. That looks completely, completely different.
Well, it's got a lawn on each side where houses are.
Right.
That is, that is the glass.
The color scheme and so forth, yeah. I mean, I think it'll be an improvement, and that's why I would be willing to support it. I, I think it's real weak to say, well, you know, four or five people in the neighborhood have it, so, you know, we should have it. Because we've just, we've just let some of those go overboard by granting too many variances in the past. But, you know, this will be an improvement to the property, I think. They can park it onsite, and so I would support it. But I'm sorry about the variance, I'm sorry that that didn't get, that noticed originally.
Dennis, your comments?
First of all, I support the, the vision of our planning commission that, that we remove carports from our vocabulary. It's hard, it's hard to make any, any structure look good with, with actually the, the key element being a car parked under a house. It's bad enough we park in our houses, it is. If you, if you went around Capitola, and particularly Jewel Box, any, any house that's over 25 years old is non-conforming. And I think staff agree with it. There's non-conforming everywhere in that neighborhood, everywhere, if your house is not 25 years old.
Let's, we can't engage in a conversation, thank you.
Okay, well, it's, it's a generalization, but I would say it's pretty close. And so, we're dealing with a community that's already non-conforming all in itself. Granting a variance is not, is not, should not be given lightly in the city. We have rules that govern that. Although, what we do with our zoning ordinance is we dictate to design, it isn't always necessarily good design. And I think offsets of houses in the front is a big mistake in our town. I think that there should be offsets, there should be different offsets, as long as you're providing for adequate open space and the parking in the front, I think you should allow it. In fact, Pleasure Point just initiated a plan, the Pleasure Point Plan, that they encourage people to offset or bring their house forward to the street, making it more social, reversing houses, make, make it, make it social in your, in your neighborhood. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm going to support the planning commission's decision on this, and I'll follow with the, the motion.
Okay. Just a couple of points. I, I want to let the applicant and the appellant both know that, you know, we work really hard on our zoning ordinance right now. We've got it under discussion, we're trying to redo it, we're trying to take the tool and make it as, as best as it possibly can be. What makes it challenging is, as Dennis said, it's, you know, whether you like it or not, there's so many non-conforming homes in this town. I personally don't take any, like Stephanie said, we don't take variances lightly. I mean, our goal and our instruction, I think, to the community director is to, you know, issue them only when necessary. And when one comes before us like this, you know, you have to take a look at the circumstances. And for me, would, would, there's a feeling that, you know, in my personal opinion, it's just that I think that, that not looking at cars and carports and putting a garage door, there is an enhancement. What makes me sway to approve this is that, when it's all said and done, they have 14 feet in front, plus the additional 12 feet, because it's a sidewalk-exempt area. So, there's 26 feet to park a car. If they were pushing this garage out and had the inability to park cars in their driveway, that's a negative, but that doesn't exist here. So, I think the planning commission used good guidelines. I, I, I think they attempted to give it the best look. I, I think Jac pointed out that the, the vision is not obscured by, by the bringing out of that wall. If I do the overhead look, it's somewhat consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Our, our biggest, you know, our, one of the rules we're supposed to pay attention to is not to make sure we give anybody any favorable opinion. And I don't think that we can say we singled out and did a favorable opinion. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to go along with the rest of the council here, and I will, I will support upholding the planning commission decision.
Just a quick point of order, before we go down a path that we've all felt bad about in retrospect, I'm looking at an elevation of the front of the house that shows a front door to the left of the garage doors. Is this what we're approving? Because I'm hearing, I have an uncomfortable feeling that we're going to approve what we see, and what we see is not going to be built. Tell me I'm not wrong.
We will inspect the project when it's being constructed, and I don't-
Would you look at sheet A7? It's the, the packet page 110? And tell me that's an accurate depiction of the, the elevation of this house when it is completed? I'll call this the Capitola Beach Villa Syndrome, okay? I'd like to see built what we approve.
We've heard that before.
And is there an issue with the stairway, the outside stairway?
I don't really see an issue with the outside stairway, but I do see an issue with, you know, Brett mentioned that there's no front door anymore, and I see one plan that truly shows no front door, and yet I look at an elevation, it's very beautiful, I like the house, and there's a front door.
There's a front door, but what you're seeing, I think, is a gate in the front, and it may be the door to the garage to the right.
There's a walkway behind that. There's a walkway. So, that front door, front door, so to speak, is merely, it merely goes to a side walkway?
Yes.
And where is the front door? Because I'm still not seeing one on the floor plan. Dennis, can you help me? Because I don't see a front door on the floor plan anywhere.
I would think it had to be over by the staircase, but I don't, I don't see, I don't see a front door. There is none.
Brian, are you able to locate-
Somebody tell me how these folks are going to get into their house?
So, this little, or, we've got different plans up now, but that front entry that looks like a door is really kind of a faux wall. It'll lead into a little outdoor patio area.
To the left.
Yeah, to the left, so.
It's a gateway, is what it is.
And what, you got, you got the upper floor, and give us the lower floor.
Where's the, where's the doorway to the house?
Trying to pull those up.
Give us the lower floor.
Just don't tell me the entry to the house is on the second story.
No, it's not second story. You got, you got the second floor up there. Go to the first floor.
So.
The first floor-
There's that.
The first floor has the two bedrooms and the garage downstairs.
The door's right there, Dennis, you can see, look at the picture.
So, you see the little front en, entry right here? You go through, and then you got the front door.
No, that's the main door to the garage, that's not a front door.
The main.
I'm sorry, that's the term.
Yeah. That's not what, that, that, that rendering there is not what this house is.
And that door doesn't exist on the, on the floor plan?
Yeah, it's not.
I'm not feeling really warm and fuzzy about getting plans before this board or the planning commission that reflect the reality of the home.
Who's the owner? Where's the front door?
Well, we can-
Is there an architect in the room?
Yeah.
Sure, come on up.
Sir, come on up, and shed light on where the front door is.
Because I don't see, I don't see that side wall elevation matching the floor plan whatsoever. Maybe you can-
Yes, that, that is, that is an error. We actually, I thought I gave you another revised set of plans that showed the doorway on the, where the bathroom is.
Okay, so there is, there is a different set of plans that is more accurately depicts the building of this home?
Well, then, that entryway, yes. That floor, floor plan, the exterior will remain the same.
I must reserve my vote on this until I see plans of a house that we're actually going to see in, in the real world built. Because this, we have gone down this road too many times, and I'm sorry, I made the, I mean, I still feel strongly about supporting the planning commission on that regard. With regard to passing this, getting ready for a building permit, I want to see exactly what's going to get stamped job copy, and I want to see it in front of us before I vote for it.
Are you telling us that, that the entry is actually where the bathroom is now, it's shown on this?
Yeah.
It goes straight ahead down the walkway?
Yeah, that bathroom moves out to where the storage areas. I, I had revised the plans, but I'm not sure that that got to the-
No, it's, it's-
Yeah, I know, it isn't.
Well, it's clear, I'm aware that there's no door.
You're going to move out, the bathroom out by, adjacent to the garage?
Where the storage areas are, that, that would become the new bathroom. And where the bathroom is, that would become an entry with a door where the window is.
So the door, the door is actually facing the side, is on the side of the house?
Yeah, it'd be a side entrance, yeah.
I, I agree with the Mike, we gotta, we gotta have the right plans.
Let's withdraw our motions and continue the item.
I will withdraw the motion.
I withdraw my second.
A motion and the second, withdrawn.
I would like to continue this, I would like to move to continue this appeal until we receive accurate plans for the construction of this home.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you, sir, for clarifying that. Okay, any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously to continue the item until more clarification is given.
It has happened in this town so many times, you can't even believe it.
Okay, with that, we're going to move to the, consider a wharf house lease extension.
Sorry, I'll get the presentation.
Disappointed, I wanted that to go away. Well, it was-
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. We're here to talk about the, the existing and the renewal of the, the wharf house restaurant lease. Currently, we have a lease that began in 2001, was extended in 2006 with a five-year option. So the First Amendment of that lease is going to expire next month. I was asked to bring options. We could extend the lease with the current terms, similar five-year with a five-year option. We could extend the lease with different terms in length. Or we could extend the lease for a shorter period, say a year, and if the question was to direct staff if we want to go forward with a request for proposal for, for the facility. So I'd like to know, kind of get direction of where we stand on this.
Is this public hearing time, or question time?
Questions, if you have any questions.
No questions.
Any questions?
I, I have a comment, but I, I can wait till we go to that point.
Okay. Anybody from the public that would like to come up and address us on this?
You're it.
Don't talk yourself out of a deal here.
Billy Case, I'm sure you're aware, I own the wharf house. I, I do have some comments that I, I kind of randomly jotted down here in preparation to maybe, I don't know, rebut, or, or at least argue that you're, any idea that you might have to put a lease for a restaurant out there in a bidding process. You know, I've, I've got 25 years out there, and I've got a lot of sweat, blood, and guts in that restaurant out there, and I've gone through many, many years of hard times. We had a lot of, of bad years. We, we experienced many months of closure over the years. The very first years were very, very tough for us. Nobody has ever been a successful restaurant out on that wharf until we came along. And we're very proud of that. We think we're doing a very good job for the community, and I think that we have a facility there that the council can be proud of. I know that, well, I, depending on what, what kind of decision you, you folks might make today, I, I do have a number of comments that I would like to make, but some of them might be premature if, until I know kind of the direction they might want to take.
This is going to be your opportunity to speak, so if you have some things you want to share, you should share them with us now.
Well, I, I just reiterate the fact that, you know, I, I, I don't know that, I've never thought I'd be part of a discussion where we'd be talking about a bidding process. I don't know how easily you think that might, might work. I mean, if you've got somebody in mind that wants to come in and put some plastic to, sort of facility together there that doesn't fit our wharf, we fit the wharf. And we've, we're, we're well-accepted there. And I, I think some of the comments that were made earlier about people that were, oh, I love Capitola, well, I think we're part of the reason. I'm, I'm not going to go over all of the points, but I, I think the point that I've made is, is probably the most important. You know, you go into business, as those of you that are in business know, you go into business to develop a business, build it, and make it a marketable asset. And I certainly have no interest in, in leaving the, the wharf. I mean, I, I'm asking for a lease extension, and, and I don't, I don't see any reason that that should be denied us. I, I don't believe that you go out on the Santa Cruz Wharf, I don't believe that Stag Narrows or Marines or any of those people are ever asked to- to, well, let's go into a bidding process. You, you're gonna have a tough time finding people that want to put a restaurant out in a tenuous area like that. You know, I have to compete with, with restaurants that have parking, they have easy delivery access for all their supplies and for their service people. Let me tell you what, it is no bargain operating a restaurant out on that wharf, 800 feet out with a long ways for people to move out there. We love what we do. I want to stay there as long as you'll permit me the opportunity of doing so. So I, I, I guess I've said my piece.
Thanks for your comments, really appreciate it.
As much as I think that Dennis would love to get his hands on all your nautical gear hanging there, I, I still feel very strongly that I want to move that we... Oh, I know, you, you both talked about that after the meeting and I want to, I want to move that we extend the lease on the current terms.
I, I, discussion is for...
Sure, we have discussion.
Okay. I'm for extending the lease, but not for five years. And I'll tell you why. It's because hopefully we'll have within a couple of years a plan for this whole work. The building is old. Is it Willie's responsibility to replace that building? No, it's not Willie's responsibility. It's our responsibility. We're assuming a lease on a building that has, has had sewer problems. It has, it has, it has some piers missing right underneath the building that we never put down through the building. We have a bathroom that's located in the wrong spot. We know that. The, the restaurant should have windows wrapped all the way around the end of it if it's gonna, if you're gonna make that successful and a bigger draw to be had. There's a million things wrong with it. It's basically held together with old tumors. It's just like the pier itself right now. And so I, I think, I think five years extends it out too far. I think if we give them two years, but give Willie the first option if we decide to rebuild, give him first option there. Give him first option for a lease on that property. I'm not asking to go out for bid for lease, but I'm saying is he should have first option if we rebuild it. But we have to do something with that structure and we can't wait five years.
I think, I think that anything, I have no problem with the five years. And I think that Willie's always been amenable to any kind of, you know, remodeling we needed to do. And even if we needed to shut him down for a couple of months and, and do some serious rebuild, he'd work with us through that. Moving the restrooms, I'm sure he'd work with us through that. I, I think that we're not exposing ourselves at all because we have a willing tenant and the city manager has something he's dying to say.
I was, I was just gonna be able to offer sort of that, that exact point. I think that we, we can, if, if this is the direction the council would like to give us, that we can negotiate a five-year lease extension and then just include terms that would give the city the right to come in and do renovations to the wharf and make sure that the terms work for Mr. Case as well.
I think realistically, we're taking that thing to the ground and we're building it back. So it's probably a six-month process that Willie's not going to have a, a restaurant out there.
And we, we can be clear that in the lease terms that we come back with, that there's language in there that acknowledges that possibility and make sure we keep our options open.
Okay.
Do you still have your restaurant in Santa Cruz? Are you still renting your, renting your restaurant in Santa Cruz?
That's the one that supported this one.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'll tell you, if, if we could ever find, I have a, a pet project that I'd like to do. If we can ever find a, an electric vehicle, a golf, golf cart that, you know, sits six or eight, all, I'm retired now, I'll drive it and get some people to drive it, to take people from the village out there to the wharf to have breakfast or lunch or dinner or whatever, and then come back. Because that's what we need. We need, we need a nice little comfortable, safe vehicle for the old folks to get out there and enjoy it because they don't, you know, they're kind of nervous about walking all the way out there. So if we can ever find one, you know, let's buy it and we'll find some people to drive it around. It would be so nice to have that just constantly on Saturdays and Sundays going back and forth. People would enjoy it. They'd drive, you know, ride it out there and we could get, get more, you know, elderly folks out there to have breakfast or lunch or dinner.
Maybe the city manager has found one online and wants to put it up on the screen.
Seriously, I mean, I'll buy it. I mean, I mean, I really think that would be a really nice service for this community because it is difficult for a lot of people, no, no, six, 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 for, for six passengers.
Six cones, six people.
This is actually another vehicle we're looking at for a parking enforcement officer's, but I thought, yeah, it was...
I saw it with the, the League of California Cities at their convention last year. They had fleets of electric vehicles of all shapes and sizes and they had one there. It's a little pricey right now, but, I mean, I use golf carts. Look at the golf courses around the country that are closing because of the drought. I mean, can't we get a golf cart from them? Let's work on it. Golfer?
We're working on the lease right now. So we'll, we'll get on the golf cart. Jacques, you have comments?
Hey, you're part of Capitola. You're gonna stay.
Okay, but I, I feel the momentum, but I, but, you know, I have concerns about this, Willie. Here's, here's where I'm coming from. I, we, we just had a presentation on the wharf. And, and, you know, we could be looking at doing realistically $4 to $10 million worth of work. And as Dennis touched on, you know, it, it could involve building an entirely new, entirely new building out there. And what I, what I'm, what I'm concerned about what Capitola does is there's a couple of sole proprietary businesses that are available and yours is one of them. And we don't do RFPs on these. And I just wonder if, if there's any liability or exposure or whether we're doing the best we can for the city. Should we go out there and invest $10 million on this wharf and build a, a brand-new structure? You know, I, I'm not comfortable. I'm, I'm not comfortable with a five-year lease. I'm sitting here just 30 minutes ago making a commitment that I'm gonna re, you know, find ways to rebuild the wharf and it's, now we're gonna sign a five-year lease. So I'm, I'm leaning with Dennis, okay? I would like to do something of a shorter term. I don't believe an RFP is a bad tool. I don't think it's meant as, as anything to, you know, to, to move you out of here. It's just a way to make sure that we're offering this business if it, if it should train, change dramatically. Hang on a second, this is, this is, we're speaking. If the business does change dramatically, we have to, you know, we have an obligation to look at that. And it isn't like we're just renewing the lease and we're not going to do anything for five years out there. So I'm, I, you know, I'm, I'm, the language, I'm not sure, can you repeat what you're trying to say? What, what are you thinking that you want to do with the lease?
My suggestion to address the concern that Councilmember Norton raised about the possibility of a major wharf project obviously leading to a shutdown of, of the accessibility or the availability of the facility that Mr. Case is renting would be that we include terms that the city has the right, provided, you know, proper notification procedures to do that project within the term of the lease. So basically, we're not bound, we don't hold up our wharf project because it would impair its ability to operate. And obviously, you know, we would have to negotiate what the terms of that would look like.
Would, would that allow, if we were to go in there and act, actually rebuild the entire building, would it allow us to renegotiate the contract with that based on the fact that there's new facilities?
I think that that could be, those could be terms that could be applicable and included in the contract.
Unfortunately, we're having the discussion here now. So that's, that's my concern. I, I would like to see some language like that, that, that doesn't tie our hands, it's not meant to kick Mr. Case out of the business, but if we do proceed with, with a serious commitment to the wharf and if we end up making it a bigger project than what we even imagined, just don't want our hands to be tied.
I don't, I don't think legally our, our city attorney will allow our hands to be tied. And I think if anything, if I, if I were in the business and I owned the wharf and I was getting ready to invest some money and I was in this position now, I would want a longer lease from Willie to make sure there's always somebody out there to run something that we're going to rebuild. Because we could wind up with, you know, rebuilding the restaurant, we only gave Willie a two-year lease, he leaves, we have a brand-new restaurant and nobody wants to run it. Because like he said, it's 900 feet from shore, there's no parking. You know, even if we rebuild the entire wharf, it's a sketchy bet business-wise.
The garbage company can't even get out there, can they?
And I, I am filled with pride that the mayor feels that our government runs so efficiently that we could get anything done in five years. I appreciate that.
Hey, we're, we're building and paving speech right now. We're doing Stockton Bridge. I'm totally optimistic.
You realize, you realize we planned that Stockton Bridge crosswalk two years ago? You realize that?
Credit to our public works director, we're getting things done.
I'm not dissing Steve Jesburg back there, honest.
Let's clear one thing here. We own the wharf, is that correct?
Correct.
Do we own the buildings out there?
Yeah, we do.
Is it our responsibility to keep the buildings up or is it, is it the tenant's responsibility to keep the buildings up?
I think it's, it's shared responsibility in the lease.
Shared responsibility, okay. So if we, if we chose to redesign the bathrooms in the building, does that come on our shoulders or is this something we'd have to involve Willie in? Is this, since we're in a lease with him, is this something we would, we would be tied to?
I, I think in, at least right now, that would be, that would be our responsibility.
That, yes, that, that piece of it.
If we were, if we redesigned the bathrooms and, and giving more space to, to the restaurants, I heard earlier, that would be our responsibility.
My knowledge of that building and, and destruction is, is that there's really not a lot saveable out there besides Willie's collection of, of nautical antiques. They, they always have to be saved, but, but, but always the building itself, you just can't, it can't be taken down. It's, it's, it's been torn apart 12 times. It's been remodeled. The kitchen's, I think it's not in great shape. The, the sewer system's in bad shape, the electrical system's in bad shape. It, it, the deck upstairs, it's there, but it's not in good shape. Everything's been done half-assed. So we're gonna have to rebuild that building. So what it does, it comes back and hopefully we can do that within five years, but maybe not. Maybe it takes longer than that. Maybe we rebuild the pier, then we do the, the restaurant. But I, I think that has to be somehow agreed in the, in the lease that not pulling Willie out of there, but, but he has to know that, that it is our intention in some date in the future to actually do a major reconstruction of that, of that area.
So, yeah, we, we can write something off that.
Okay.
Is the maker of the motion amenable with that language being included?
Absolutely. And I think Willie expects nothing less. We're gonna, we're, we're realists and he's worked with us for 20 years. You know, he's closed the restaurant when we asked him to. All sorts of things. We've, the plumbing's been destroyed and he's had to close and we had to redo it. Let's just go forward and the, and the city attorney will put something in there to cover us for the replacement of the restaurant.